Folks, thank you for being present at our, I think this is the first curriculum meeting of the school year. We made some shifts in September, partially because I was down one foot. So thanks for bearing with me, but we're back together now and looking forward to moving on. So as always, let us start with our public comments. And I know one person in the audience I see, but how many have signed up?
Uh, we have two people signed up.
Two people have signed up, alright.
First up is Gabriella Carr.
Hello Gabriella Carr.
Hello. Uh, my name is Gabriella Carr. I'm a staff member here at ICSD. I worked at Ithaca High School for the last three years. I was virtual during the pandemic and saw children go through some of the worst mental emotional situations that I have ever been part of as an educator. And then in person, I experienced something very different because students had to interact in person for the first time. And many of my students don't know how to express their emotions. They don't know how to handle conflict. We are supposed to be a culture of love, but I have witnessed bullying, ostracization. I have seen racial bias. I have seen transphobia. Our students do not know how to have healthy conversations. They do not know how to talk about their feelings and resolve conflict, actively listen, hear from the heart, and hear difference. Um, I really do think that our school needs to invest in social, emotional, healthy relationship building and communication skills. We should offer a course at our school that helps rectify this issue. If we, I'm a theater teacher. I can only do so much when my children are going through deep conflict. I only have so many hours. But what I could use is support in helping those students be able to communicate their needs and how can they see each other's differences so we can work beyond conflict and actually create collisions of change in our community. So thank you very much. If you have any questions, I'd love to answer.
We will let the other person sign up to speak.
Sure.
And then Pat and I, and I think Erin is online, we'll respond.
Sure.
Comments or questions. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much.
Good to hear from teachers. Always good to hear from teachers. Appreciate it.
Diana. Hi. Welcome to fall and I'm trying to be colorful, let's treat us. Um, you all know me, most of you I think, as a marriage and family therapist and practiced for over thirty years and have been advocating for this course that Gabriella has just made so important from the teacher's point of view. And I hope you have a copy of the latest update. Um, the two bills that were put in the Albany Senate and Assembly in 2017 to mandate emotional, social learning. So, I am very happy to announce that. The next step is, and I think you also have a copy of this, is I wrote to the governor, emailed the governor, because she has to sign those bills into law. So, I am very excited. And I'm hoping that Ithaca will take a hold of the reins and be one of the first uh, to offer this elective, um, healthy relationship skills. I'm very happy. And if you have any questions, I would love to answer. Or comments.
Alright, the colleague responses or questions? Iron.
Well, I will, I will comment that student mental health crises, especially as, as a result of the pandemic, are at crisis, uh, levels. Statewide, nationally, internationally, this is not a local problem. It's not an American problem. It is a worldwide problem. It is something that we have to try to solve on the local level. And, um, I will, I will just add for the public that we have not neglected social, emotional learning in our curriculum for the past number of years, that we have, uh, it's been rolled out primarily at the elementary level. Uh, we've, we've seen a new push on that. For that, since students did return in person, of course, we can always do more. Uh, I still await, um, recommendations from our school administrators on, on what form that should take in the high school. I would certainly advocate, uh, even though we no longer have a legislative advocacy committee, I would certainly advocate for the board to send a letter supporting these bills, which I am not finding under A7063, uh, at all, but I'm looking at.
It might be without DA.
Yeah, it, it's, it's not coming up other, under 7063. I'm looking, I'm seeing A10882.
Yeah, we, we both have to search. We'll, we'll dig into it later.
Yeah. But as far, but as far as, uh, uh, advocating for mental health services to be provided by schools, that's, uh, I don't think there's anyone against it.
Erin, any, any comments, questions, follow-ups?
Um, I, I wanna thank both of you for speaking and I just, um, I don't know, I just wanna add that it's everywhere. I mean, I was preaching to the choir, I suppose, but what everyone has been through during this pandemic, I mean, there's a lot to be undone. As I try to block something behind me, like, there's a lot to unlearn. And unfortunately, we as adults may not have set the best example. And I don't mean teachers, I mean us as parents. It's been a hard few years, so, um, yeah, anything we can do to support this, we're here. And thank you.
Alright, uh, I know Dr. Brown wants to probably educate us. But I'm gonna take a minute just to frame, uh, the comments and the history from my perspective. We know this is an issue. We don't need to repeat this. We know this is a national issue. However, where we are now, in my opinion as a group, that means us as a board and our administrators and executives, we have complete faith in is this. We need to determine the best mechanism to implement whatever we choose. In the past, under this administration, we've chosen a model that reached as many kids as possible. And that meant sometimes slow roll, right? That meant invigorating the entire staff by starting with a couple of well-known teachers, having them attend training, working in the summertime during our development courses, and eventually spreading it out so that as many students as possible experience what we know is needed. And the prior legislative advocacy committee knew about this bill. And if you look at our past minutes, this has come up before. As a matter of fact, we brought it up, saying we know that eventually the state is gonna meet us where we are. Uh, last year, Diana and I had a chance to explore something that she was, has been promoting for years. I'll say it again, I didn't really understand what she was saying. It's a concrete program offered by a group called the Relationship Foundation. And we got to witness some of their, um, some of how they were rolling this out in New York City. And I was extremely impressed. Do I see a need for this? Of course, not just here, but everywhere. As I said to you before, I wish we had their emotional need statements up on the wall right next to Dr. Brown's culture of love, right? This one is aspirational, this one is more implementation. All that being said, we've given our teachers a lot, Gabrielle, as you know, right? Layer upon layer upon layer upon layer of things we want to, to integrate, to move our whole district forward, for all kids, not just kids all in one particular spectrum. So I ask you to think about, again, we don't have to get into the details now. Is the solution you propose for a singleton class that's gonna be an elective, that a certain concrete number of kids will experience every year, is that the best way to get at this critical? And that's gonna become more of a, actually, that's gonna become more of an important question as the two sides move closer together to implement something at the high school level. So, with that, we're gonna let our leader share his thoughts.
Thank you, Ms. Harris, Dr. Wilder. I had no intention of talking tonight. I think when I sat down to share, that was my mistake. Because I feel compelled to, um, speak on this particular topic, I think language is important. And particularly, um, post-pandemic, as we're bringing our young people back into a space, it's gonna be important for us not to re-traumatize and be careful and cautious about the language we use when we're describing them. What I do know is that our babies bring a lot of gifts into the spaces each and every day. So as we're talking about this issue going forward, let's first note that our young people are awesome, they're joyful, and they bring a lot of gifts and talents into our space. And while folks have noted that our young people are challenged all over the country, including here, around social, emotional health, let's please also first acknowledge that they're human and they're beautiful and awesome. Because not starting with that will traumatize them when we leave with how they have no skills to navigate the complexities they navigate each and every day. Because frankly, many of our young people who are coming into a space, when they show up, they've navigated things that most of us have no idea or could never navigate successfully. So just to be showing up in a space shows me they have many skills. Now, let's think about what we know about best practice and research when it comes to this particular issue. Yes, I think it's important to have individual courses or a focus on healthy relationships. But I also know that the research and best practice and my personal and lived experiences over forty-eight years that the social, emotional health, particularly for people from marginalized backgrounds, improves when you give them more power and control of their environments. And when you have deep and critical conversations about the social, political context, they navigate each and every day. So when folks are talking about what this district is doing to support the social, emotional health for our young people, let's, I'll give you three talking points. I could go on for another hour, but let's just start with these three. And maybe we leave with that when we talk about this particular issue. One, we will cultivate and recognize joy. And we say that our young people bring joy into the space and they are joyful just to be in our presence. That's one. Because a smile, from the last time I read the research, was the most, in, the most effective instruction and strategy, just a smile. Two, we can build a curriculum where our young people have conversations about issues in their local communities that they can and wish to solve, i.e. classism, ableism, sexism, issues around climate change. See, I just left a sustainability session today, a summit, where over a hundred young people were there advocating, engaging with community members, and were on fire about solving an issue that was impacting them locally and nationally. And I saw their engagement and social, social, emotional health at an all-time high. And we can also talk about how young people have an impact on the policies, which will impact the environment they navigate each and every day. See, um, there's a code of conduct revision that has been led by young people that will be coming to the board, and is now being advertised for our community to have impact conversations about. There is an academic calendar. We were off school a few weeks ago in a way we had not been off in the history of our school district. That was led by young people who have power and control of their environments, who came to this session. And we had to recognize their joy and how they were changing the policy of a hundred and fifty million dollar organization in school district that's institutionally impressive. So when we have this conversation about improving the social, emotional health for our young people, let's make sure we have a real one about what we know that improves it. But most importantly, first, let's start with recognizing the gifts and talents that our young people bring every day. And I caution us about ever leading with what they don't do and what they don't have first. Again, I hope we have a long discussion about this topic. Again, I didn't even mean to talk about this tonight. But what I have committed to is interrupting stuff that I know will negatively impact young people's third.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Well said. Uh, just to follow up on that, I've spoken to some of the experts in Dr. Brown's blog here over the last, well, we were shut down for two years. Prior to that, we had folks come to talk about trauma-informed learning, we had folks come to talk about, um, abolitionist teaching, we had folks come to talk about things over the years, resilience to do this phrase, and, and, you know, what I challenge all of them to think about is the following, what Dr. Brown said. Just today, on my social media, I shared several pictures of what me and my friends did. We rode the top of New York City subway stations. We jumped from rooftop to rooftop. These are our games. Flipping out second-story windows onto mattresses. Right? Surviving deindustrialization, surviving arson, surviving multiple drug epidemics. I mean epidemics. So I find it extremely challenging as well when I hear folks talk about the kids who come from that environment, right? And let's, took about, let's look at our rural kids too. Farms that have been shut down and sold to massive industrial agricultural situations, right? The kids who now are growing up exposed to different drugs than we were, but the exposure is just as horrible, right? Our children are, if there's one thing I know about children from those circumstances, God help anybody who says they aren't resilient, right? Probably did what circles around adults when it comes to their resilience. So, we have to take this walk together, right? I deserve it from my teacher. Gabriella, I respect you. You've told us your position being in front of a class of actual human beings. But I would suggest that you also begin to come to these meetings more, you speak to our leaders, that you share your reflections about what happened in professional development to summer, the past summers, how you've seen that implemented within the classroom, what you're doing to manage your own wellness, right? These, these are gonna have to be more nuanced conversations. They're gonna have to extend over a longer period. So, we hear you. Still have to get to an answer, figure this out. Thank you. Alright, moving on. We got some really interesting stuff to get to today. Uh, for approval of minutes, I guess we're talking about August now. Trisha?
Yes.
I looked them over quickly and they look fantastic to me.
Yep, I'm, I'm good to go.
Alright, we got two votes. Erin, minutes, August? Alright, we got three yes votes.
They're good. Yeah, sorry.
Three yes votes, Trisha. Alright, now to something I've been dying to get to. Alright, so again, let me preface this real quickly and then we'll have our experts come and school us. So, over the years, we've managed to, both at the same time, whittle down what we think we have to offer as leaders in this critical area of curriculum, being elected officials representing the community and our kids. Same time we try to whittle it down, we've seen this beautiful expansion and explosion, right? Given what our educational leaders are trying to do here regarding teaching and learning. Because we use thought maps, because we use models, because we've gone to C classrooms, I think we have a pretty good handle on what's happening. Now, what we wanna begin the discussion about is, what does this new strategy of teaching and learning mean regarding accountability? When's that intersection going to occur? We started out, even before Dr. Brown came, having this conversation about what's that intersection of equity and excellence? And we got the community to stop playing this zero-sum game as if one means the extinguishment of the other, right? We're not playing that game. But there's no organization, I'm aware of, where there's no measure of accountability, of if it's a P score or making widgets such a factor. So we're gonna step into this space where we wanna do more magical things. And that's not derivative at all, pejorative, you know? We were introduced to this book recently, Street Data, about all the new marvelous ways of capturing the experience of young people and translating that to something meaningful. I'm still looking forward to diving into this, listening to you all tell us what we can help the community expect. This intersection of quantitative and qualitative data is gonna work. Hopefully that was clear. Uh, Pat, Erin, anything to add to that?
Um, at this point, I'm good. I wanna hear more.
Let us hear from our fielders, leaders.
Great. Where would you like us to sit?
Uh.
Here, there?
Because Erin's on the screen, let's come up to the little table.
Right.
Is that okay? Guys, got it?
Happy to.
Showtime too, or is the conversation gonna move? I gotta get off this quick. I ain't coming back till seven o'clock.
It may be, Trisha, do, we have folks online other than Erin, right? I think I saw Karina Laun, logging in.
Yes.
Hi Erin, good to see you. Um, Erin, would it be helpful for us to project things, or are you good, like, looking at it in Word docs? What feels best?
I can see it in Word docs. I'm good, thank you.
Alright, awesome. So maybe we'll just engage in a little more of a conversation?
Alright.
If that works, if that works. Yeah, oh yeah. I love conversations. Wonderful. It's gonna be a total conversation. We're gonna turn it over to Lynn to kind of start us off, because this is really her brilliant brainchild.
Thank you. Thank you, Lily. Uh, yeah, so I, um, right, I have the wonderful role of like trying to help us figure out how to measure whether or not we're being success, successful in what we're trying to do. Um, and thinking about learning for ICSD and the tenants within that around students as leaders, partners and leaders, um, anti-racist curriculum for all, teacher educator identity work and structures of support. Um, some of that is really hard to count, right? So when we think about quantitative measures, like, we'll try to count things and think about, um, like, the internal work that's involved in this, right? Then is it, like, what is the metric? What is the thing that we would count? And we've been counting things for a long time, right, and not seeing huge shifts in our data. So, um, we're not gonna stop counting things. Equity Report card will still go on. We're still gonna do that, right? So it's, and it's not an or. But, um, thinking about starting with students, because they are our center, they are why we exist, right? That's, that's why this organization is here. Um, digging deeper and capturing deep, rich stories from a smaller group of students to help us better understand what's happening and how that's changing over time. So the vision for this is, is developing kind of a focal cohort of students. Think about about twenty-two students, I mean, uh, one per grade from each of our, our secondary schools. Um, and two per grade from the high school, just this size. And that we would engage with those students several times throughout the year, either through individual interviews, focus groups, or perhaps even shadowing in the building to see what they're, see what's happening for them. Um, and engaging in a deep kind of collaborative, this is a group effort from staff, from leaders, from students themselves, of, of looking at the, the transcripts from those conversations, right? And pulling out the themes. So that's qualitative analysis. Um, and my hope, right, what, what for me would be a measure of success in learning forward is that over time, we talk to these same kids, right? Year after year, in two, three, five years, that we're gonna hear very different things about how they're feeling about school, how they're feeling about themselves and their place in this world, about the power they have, um, about how educators see and hear and love them, right? Um, and that, there, those stories from students is really, a really strong indicator of success. So it's going deep with a small number versus counting really broadly, and then carrying those to the next, to see what's going on. An exciting piece of this project, in addition just to its existence, is also engaging students as partners and leaders in the process. So partnering with, um, the high school, um, English twelve digital media class to actually be the, um, primary interviewer. So peers interviewing peers to capture their stories and then working with us to kind of analyze and mine those transcripts for what's happening. So this fits right in with their curriculum, um, where you kind of tell stories. And, um, we also, I mean, this is with their, their teachers, um, Sam Ennis and John Stein, we're like, well, kids will probably talk more to kids than they go to us, right? So, um, I'm really excited about that aspect of it, so. My hope is to start with students this, this, uh, winter and then also develop a similar cohort for faculty. So educator identity is one of the core tenants of learning for. So following that same thing, talking to a cohort of teachers over years to see how, um, their work around identity is really shaping and changing the way they engage young people and the work of educating. And, and what's helping them get there and what's not? Where are the barriers?
Alright, can we, let's stop there and see if there are any questions from my hallway.
The glaring question for me is, really, one kid per grade per school is gonna tell you what you need to know? I, I cannot wrap my head around that. Kids are so individualistic. They have so many different backgrounds. Of, you know, I'm thinking like five per school or something, you know, different, like, different socioeconomic levels, different gender identities, different, different, um, uh, racial or ethnic identities. Although that leads to, oh, that one kid represents all the free and reduced lunch people. I mean, I understand that you don't wanna just collect data, but, but I, I am having some trouble seeing that the stories of this one kid per grade is really gonna give you a meaningful window into what's going on school-wide. I mean, we're talking middle school and high school. I, but I imagine you've talked about this, so tell me what you've said.
Yeah, well, I mean, there's definitely a bit of like, start small as we learn how to do this well. So like, we have to build capacity ourselves. Like, I am not an expert in qualitative research, right? Um, we have some expertise we can, we can draft from, but starting small. Um, also like, reading street data, right? Like, you talk to five people and you stop hearing new things, right? So it's, it's, it actually isn't about, like, it's not quantity, right? And I think we're gonna learn. We're gonna evaluate after the first year. And we'll grow the cohort every year. Every year we're adding on, right, new sixth graders, this cohort of students.
Well, you're, you're adding on new sixth graders, but you're graduating that's the same number.
Yeah.
Um, and I just got my copy of Street Data today, so I cannot, I cannot ignore what you're telling me into the, the text of that narrative. So, I mean, it sounds like the numbers, you're planning for the numbers to remain constant year after year, whereas, you know, well, I mean, it's all speculation.
Uh-huh.
It just, I will tell you after I've read Street Data, we should be by the next curriculum meeting if I could change my mind and had a revelation.
That sounds great. And also, if you hear, if you hear from like the first round or two of like what, what beings emerged, right? And where is, are they're the same and where they diverge, right? That will, that will help us know if we need a larger sample to.
Yeah, I don't even know what questions we're asking these type of typical free kids per grade.
So they're in there.
Yeah. It's like, there are other questions.
Can I, can I float in with a question?
Yes, please.
Woo, sorry, it's so strange. I wish I was there. Um.
It's fine.
To build on what Pat is asking though, um, I can't help but think about students who cannot really communicate effectively orally and how we're able to tap into what their experiences are, right? The non-reliable speakers, those who have limited expressive language. How do we understand how their learning is going? And I, I imagine, are we asking them, are we figuring out ways to creatively figure out how to get answers from them? And working with them to see how their experiences differ? Because, you know, every student, I mean, I, I, I too struggle with what Pat was saying. Because, yeah, you're gonna get a lot of the same answers, but every student, based on their background, is going to have a very different experience. So I'm just very curious how this is going and how we're creatively making sure we're getting every voice heard.
Absolutely. I think that's a great point. And Mary, I don't know if you wanna jump in, but, um, that's, that's, I think, where some of the, the varying ways of connecting with students comes in. So that shadow idea can be really powerful, right? So that, um, the, the periodic check-in as we are with students or as a student is shadowing another student to gather, um, to gather their experience. Um, who, who may be communicating in ways that are what we call non-traditional or non-verbal particularly, right? And still will be communicating about their experience, right? Especially if we're pausing to check in around that day.
Alright, so here my, again, this is a, uh, we are at the beginning, trying to collectively build something that has a potential. Let's be honest, not just to transform our space, but there are districts all around the nation that I imagine but there are districts all around the nation, I imagine all around the world, really hoping somebody gets this right, right? This transition away from what we've been doing for a hundred years towards something without making our kids who traditionally, you know, tracked to Cornell and Harvard and Yale feel that they are no longer gonna be able to do that, right? While at the same time helping some of our kids for whom education has been a multi-generational failure, recognize they have a place, right? And that they can start and be confident that they're gonna be able to move on to their next chapter. Community college, a four-year college board. So let's, let's take these conversations with that ethos of building something, not sitting here telling us that this thing is complete. Given that, here are my thoughts initially. I am, I'd want to see the language we use be more expansive than just anti-racist, right? Because this work is going to, uh, have to reach those kids who we consider rural poor. We're gonna have to, uh, bind together the kids who are up here that we consider the top. Kids in the middle, who are just trying to figure it out. The kids, like I said, that are traditionally who haven't, who we haven't served well. And looking at your what in the last sentence in the what table, uh, ends with, and whether or not the experience of our students are shared reflective of our vision of anti-racist school communities built on love, joy, and deep learning. We started off talking about anti-marginalization, that anti oppression, which was wider than even anti-racist. I do understand that if you're racist, you probably wouldn't go far stepping dealing with other types of oppression, but I would like the language to reflect. All right, my second thing I'm thinking is, uh, to Pat, Erin's point, we put a lot of pressure on the selection process by limiting it this way. And I've heard complaints over the years that in these groups that Dr. Brown was put together, that principals put together to help lead schools and help us make determinations, that that's a particular group of kids, right? Those are our avatars. Those are our, our, our excellent kids, so to speak. Right, those are our kids whose families had them tracked to Ivy League education before they met us. So I really do want to see some diversity in who we select, right? This is, now we get into the tough stuff. I don't want to be placated here from kids, uh, you know, not the ones who are struggling to keep afloat necessarily. I mean, attached necessarily, some of the kids who are, who are struggling. Let's get them, let's give them voices in the mix. And, and like, again, like Pat said, I can't wait to dive into the Street Data book. The last thing I'm gonna say is, anyone here who's experienced health issues, right? Has to go see a physician every day, we have families with disabilities. We know that a lot of times the doctor says, what? Young man, young woman, young other, you have to change your lifestyle. And you go away six months, you try to do all this wonderful stuff, X, Y, Z, Y, whatever. When you come back to the doctor, what's the first thing you do? He does, he or she does. Get on the scan. We gotta take your blood pressure, right? We have to, we have to stick you with a needle, measure this and that in blood work. So I'm telling you now, I'm never gonna accept that this qualitative, um, information is going to leave the need to go back to something statistical, right? Or something measurable, if it's not statistics. I'm a private school kid, Ivy League graduate, let me just tell you. I, I know what it took for me to get there, right? And I could watch my friends every day who are going to regular public school, walk past them every day and saw that gap. I, I know what that's like. In my soul, I know what that's like. But for those kids who have a chance to, um, to survive their environment, they too needed to show something. ACT, SAT scores, some tests that these community colleges get. Some tests that the carpenters union get, right? If they decide to go a manual way. So keep that in mind. I don't see anything about data in this book. Real data, you know, it just makes the conversations more interesting, that's all. You are here to school us. We are here to help the community understand what the hell we're trying to do in a hundred fifty thousand dollars. Looking forward to it.
Well, I'm assuming that state assessments are not going to disappear.
Okay. Yeah, right.
Nope, but we also know regents is rethinking that will not significantly turn. Move in a different direction, figure out what success means. Which we talked about before, I looked it up, making sure I wasn't, you know, making it up, arguing other. Top-tier schools have decided to, but they're looking at the SAT as part of the application process, voluntary, or four-year period at least, by coming on pandemic, they're thinking the same thing. This may not tell us anything anymore. So people are exploring different models.
And MIT went back to it.
Oh, I saw that too. So we're in this together, bottom line. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Oh, I'm so excited. So if there's no other questions, comments about learning forward, we're gonna move to the second part of our agenda, which was, give you a second. Instructional round, all right. I should ask, anything you all want to add to that soliloquy?
I would add that, uh, this is one part of data collection. So we are using and will continue to use a mixed method approach that that quantitative data isn't going anywhere. It is a both and. It's qualitative piece of centering student voice alongside the, some of the traditional data points that we've taken and the state will require us to continue to take.
If a child can, if one of our young people can, can, uh, bring their heart to the lessons, Dr. Brown said, that they're feeling centered, that they can be in control, that cortisol when they come in. And teachers can be regulated and work with them without their own alarms, the triggers going off. We can respect their trauma to all those things well. I think there's a healthy expectation that the results will reveal that investment, right?
And I will also note that, um, you know, of course, we all know that for many years since its inception, LACS, formerly, they just ACS, the alternative community school, has used narrative and qualitative evaluations, right? So they've never relied on quantitative data to determine whether their math students are promoted or, um, if they're able to graduate, right? So they do promotion by exhibition or PPE and GPE, which is graduation by exhibition, which is strictly through a portfolio and performance-based assessment system. Um, and that the state, the ulterior right, the state is looking at possible ways to expand and shift their assessment program and portfolio itself. So there's a planned pilot, but they're really at the beginning stages of. And it's a, it's something strictly for middle school and high schools to explore. And it's a way of assessing student learning and understanding through portfolios and performance assessments. So that's a pilot program that we're gonna learn some more about. Very little information has enough about this. But it, this is, what we're talking about is in some ways aligned with the ways the, the state and the, the world is, is moving, right?
I'm happy we're learning from that experiment that's only been in our backyard thirty years, thirty plus years. So God bless us for that. I know many in health half-raised, who, God knows how many of those little genius babies from LACS who've gone on to Ivy League law schools and were congressional people, doing entrepreneurship, et cetera, et cetera. Again, I, I have to say that with some reservation, thinking about who those kids were. And I think a lot of them were trapped for success. I don't want to say irrespective of the high school they encountered, but I know the families. Still waiting for LACS to prove in mass, but they can have the same effect on marginalized kids. Kids from the other side of the tracks, so it's, uh, that's just real. We have to learn from them and they have to learn. They had a lot of things to learn from the traditional high school models, right? One attendance, but we won't talk about, we won't talk about those things. So, yes.
I mean, we just did. Wait, wait, we won't talk about.
We won't talk, we won't talk about those things. Uh, all right, so healthy conversation, this one's gonna be with us. Would you like us to go or keep, keep track of where this goes and, uh, and work together as we always do? All right, uh.
Thank you, we appreciate that feedback. Just thank you Eldred, and Pat, and Erin.
No, you are welcome. All right, structure rounds. This is how we're going to see with our own eyes and learn.
Right, so every year, I would say the past, four or five years, maybe since we've been in these roles, Mary and I started this thing here, here downtown, um, we have worked to be in classrooms to understand what's actually happening. And so each year we try to put together a schedule and clarify what the framework is. So this year we're continuing to focus in on learning forward ICSD and those four tenants. Through a series of awesome whiteboard exchanges, we have determined that we'll have several lenses that we'll be looking at learning forward through. The first is middle schools. We really wanna focus a lot on elementary. We're gonna get zoom further in on middle school. Um, evaluation, which is part of our conversation today. How do we know that this is working? And what, what are some of the ways that we're assessing ourselves as an organization? Assessing student, understanding, um, and beyond. Um, and then strategic partnerships. What are, in what ways are we leveraging the genius and the funds of knowledge and the ways in which people are actually figuring it out in our community within our, our school walls and vice versa, right? In what ways are we sort of creating those lines and ensuring that there's that connection? So given that, um, we have a couple of requests around literacy, around, um, and around middle school mathematics, um, to head to next. Um, so we thought it would be helpful to, and those were from the past, just looking back at our notes and our email from you recently, Pat. So, uh, Mary and I are looking forward to planning these and would love to hear from you all, like, where do you want to go? And what specifically do you want to focus on? Or what are some of your initial thoughts? And then we can put out some other options and then start to schedule.
Literacy and math, or I should say, there's, I think, two things more important than that. Let's stop there. If there's one other thing I would add, it would be, I'm gonna combine two things. I'd love to see this project-based model, um, through a lens of an anti-marginalization curriculum. Right, so which middle school teachers are out there in front of that? Uh, I, I, I know enough of what's happening in middle school to know that some things are happening, but I can't see all of them. I'm talking about, uh, we'll talk about, uh, housing discrepancies in downtown Ithaca, right? Giving out new development. And what are the ethnic and race base and class space, you know, implications of that? Boy, that'd be a good thing for our kids to say to Ithaca two full year. So I, I know there's somebody working on something of that page. Would like to see.
I agree with that. Again, since I haven't read the book yet.
Oh, this, you don't have to read the book too, especially for this one.
It's a reasonably thick book, too.
Oh, I'm trying to think of, of, of other things that would be valuable for middle school. I don't have anything like simmering in my, in my brain right now that I need to know more about other than let's, you know, we, we, and I haven't gotten on as many instructional rounds as, as other committee members have, but I have a more flexible work schedule this year. Any day but Friday might work. But, you know, I will turn it over in my mind. I won't give any easy answers. And probably getting back into the middle schools after so many years. Cause the last time we were in was pre-pandemic, we were with math. We'll probably see just more.
I don't see Pat. Maybe she's hushed when they get here.
Erin, Erin.
I'm sorry, Erin. Erin, are you still there with us?
He doesn't see me.
I look right through that all the time.
That's okay, Eldred, that's okay.
As I figured, look at that beautiful scenery. She is quickly driving over here for the.
She's driving.
Driving, so we're listening. And yeah, I'm still with you. Hi there. Yeah, when my husband was teaching online, he would have students driving from place to place and tuning in. He would tell them, don't participate.
In addition to what Pat said, the one other thing I can think about that I'm really interested in seeing is what it looks like, what the student engagement looks like. Curriculum and lesson planning, I, I don't, I haven't really seen that yet, right? Oh, uh, she wasn't, this is, okay. We have a member of Republic who'd like to say something. So let me just get this last, uh, finish this last slide. I, if possible, I would like to see that. What's it look like to engage students? Might, maybe the train's already passed because we did it in summertime, I know all the PD after I did that. I didn't make, I didn't make any more professional elements. But we could poke our head into that, that would be great. I assume panel, right? Just made in the summer, rooming away. Students told first-year teachers that, what they need, what their expectations. Our teachers have failed them in math. Their incoming teachers will take, go business.
Yeah, I wish I had seen that, that would have been something.
That's pretty amazing. Uh, me and Mormon either, so. Ask her about the impact as well, but, I mean, seeing students is powerful, right? We can do it, we want it. And, uh, I think we have, uh, done this in enough time. So that's four solid things, right? Let me make sure we're on the same page. Literacy, math, um, the combination of project-based and anti-marginalization, and we're seeing the students as partners.
And any day but Friday.
Yeah, any day but Friday. That's my date when I test the community office.
Okay, got it. Sounds good. All right, we'll work on that.
All right, and, uh, I think Patricia said we have another member of the Republic who wants to speak.
Karina.
Did they join us initially? Did they sign up?
She didn't sign up.
Hey, Karina, you didn't sign up? I know she didn't. All right, we will, we will give her an opportunity to speak since we have some time.
But with the caveat that we have under five minutes.
Well, she has three, so go for it.
Like, under five minutes to the meeting, though.
Thank you so much for giving me some time. I feel like I have some unique input here since I do have a current middle schooler and I have another one who just got out of middle school. I'm also now the head of the PTA at DeWitt. I'm not sure how that happened. And so in parent feedback, we are seeing a strong emphasis on, uh, parents struggling with students' mental health. And so in parent feedback, we're seeing a strong emphasis on parents struggling with students' mental health. We just did a survey with fifty responses. Uh, so students are really, uh, parents are really emphasizing concerns about students' mental health. Uh, also technology used in the classroom. And I think that kind of feeds into um, students' ability to self-regulate their learning, which is like a critical uh, learning step that is happening um, at that stage. And so in instructional rounds, looking at that and and looking at uh, different ways of managing technology use in the classroom, I think would be important. Also, what is wonderful to see is that there are now more uh, support offerings in the uh, after-school area for key areas such as math or earth sciences and algebra and support like that. And um, to see how that's working. So not just looking at the what's happening during the school day, but the support that's offered after the school day. And then in general, what more can be done to really help students to to kind of self-organize their learning? Because that's really where I think uh, some of the privilege lies also in terms of parents teaching their students how to self-manage and then not all students having that kind of home support. That's all, thank you so much for letting me chime in. I didn't know I wanted to say something until you told me to talk about middle school.
Thank you.
I I think those are excellent suggestions, so thank you. Uh, the part about after-school, we sort of talked about, right? You wanna check in with our partners. But the other points you made were very salient and and well-received, so thank you.
Before we leave, I just wanna acknowledge, say one more thing before we transition. Because I was really appreciative of Dr. Brown's comment at the beginning, centering the joy and the genius of children. And so one thing that really excited me about Lynn's idea with the street data is that these conversations do center their joy and genius. And so while the quantitative measures and some of those assessments we use, we know there's bias in them. We also don't want kids getting um, a mailing saying where they ranked in math and saying to their parent, boy, I thought I was good at math, but I guess I'm just this. It's not that good. And so that, the way in which the process of assessing and how we also support kids with growth mindset, that's, that's integrated social emotional learning. So I just really look forward to having the opportunity to assess in a way, you know, finding that both again and digging into maybe, why is that, why is it a level two? Let's talk more about that.
For example, don't even get me started in the levels.
I just appreciate that I wanted to to to, you know, not leave without talking about the joy and genius of kids.
Which which possibly adds a Melvin layer or something, right? We might be able to poke our head into, which is parent culture, right? Especially ones that are led by students, or student engagement is significant. What does that mean? But again, we talk about joy, we talks about all those wonderful things, show us.
What happens if the one who is unhappy?
That would be really helpful, but insightful.
Tell us, we don't know.
We have a time to bring out that on the comment, right?
Really helpful.
This would be helpful. All emotions have meaning, so that would be helpful. Thank you so much.
Yeah, they're not, they're savvy, they're savvier than we're getting credit for. They they know what they've been going through in this system since they were, you know, this high, the kids who came to school us about the calendar, half of them didn't come up to this table, right? So I I know our kids, but uh, show, show, show that.
I I really like the the suggestion about after-school, cause I was thinking I would like to see some enrichment, but I didn't know that there was there was now more academic support after-school. And I thought for years that that was really important, but I nag about so many other things, I didn't wanna like overload.
And I stuck my head in the summer programs, right? So uh, project innovation, what we're doing with PBs and what we talk about, how one step leads to another. I get what you guys are doing. I hope they have some fun seeing it.
I'm very excited to be on the curriculum this year.
Not quite as excited as about policy, but more so than HR.
I think that waited for me to walk in the room.
Oh, okay.
Definitely actually, I wasn't planning to say that until just, yeah. And I had to add the policy thing because I was actually thinking curriculum is, I'm finding this a lot more interesting than HR, which I was on for many years, so.
That's the standard approval I needed to keep going.
But we, but we, but we made such improvements to the HR process that my work there was done.
This, again, this, we know how expansive this is, right? This is a big topic we're probably, um, follow our professional leaders who do this. I was gonna say all day, Dr. Brown does it sixteen hours a day, Dan probably does it eighteen, so I'll teach him.
For free.
There are um, there are some of us who are trying to catch up, so bear with us as well, thanks. I'm gonna uh, conclude this August meeting with.
No, it's October. We we approved the August minutes, but it's October.
August.
Oh, August.
I was using the Bronx term. Alright, so we're bringing this to conclusion, and it's now six o'clock.
I only went to public.